And somewhere Administrator Ball saying he's hiding behind the camera.
Right.
There's some comments.
Good evening, members of the City Council, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Brianna Jensen. I live at 30 Washington Street with my husband Joseph and our two young children. The reason I'm here tonight is to discuss the dangers of the lawn chemicals being used in public and private grounds in Kenyon and what changes I believe need to be made for the safety and health of our community. So although 30 commonly used lawn pesticides, 13 are carcinogens, 13 are linked with birth defects, 21 with reproductive effects, 15 with neurotoxicity, 26 with liver or kidney damage, 27 are irritants, 11 disrupt the immune system, 16 are toxic to birds, 24 are toxic to fish and aquatic organisms, and 11 are deadly to bees. The U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention did a study of 9,282 people nationwide found pesticides and 100% of the people who had both blood and urine tested. The average person carried 13 out of the 23 pesticides tested. The EPA does not evaluate the health and environmental effects of actual pesticide formulations sold on the shelf. Data submitted to the EPA also does not account for low-dose effects, synergistic effects with inert, or combined exposures to one or more pesticide at a time. Pesticides are not harmless or safe, they have to be registered with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency because they are dangerous and using them has consequences on many levels. The U.S. Congress states 90% of pesticides in current use lack health and safety tests required for registration, yet they continue to be sold and used. Pesticides are found in our air, water, soil, they drift from neighboring properties, and they are found in the rain and fog. We are exposed to pesticides through inhalation, ingestion, through food, dust, water, absorption through the skin and eyes. Pesticides can be measured in our urine, blood, and mother's breast milk. Pesticidocides are made up of inactive ingredients and several inert or other ingredients. Inert are not disclosed to the public due to their status as trade secrets. Active ingredients usually comprise only 5% of the actual product. A French scientist named Surlini, who has been studying inert ingredients for over 20 years, has found them to be up to 1,000 times more toxic than the active ingredients. Ethylene chloride, an inert poison, is an example of an inert ingredient linked with damage to the heart, eyes, liver, and adrenal glands. One of them-
Now, I understand that this is a subject that you're really passionate about-
Yeah.
-and it is important. However, I gotta ask, how much longer is your presentation going to go?
Um, it'd probably be, I, well, I did it at home and it was like 10 minutes. So if you can handle 10 minutes.
Considering the fairly light load, I suppose that would be acceptable.
Okay, okay. So one of the most popular herbicides is 2-4-D, which is also a pesticide. It is commonly part of weed and feed products, but it's also known as one of the two pesticides used in Agent Orange. It is a carcinogen linked to certain cancers, especially non-Hodgkin's, lymphoma, and soft tissue sarcomas. It disrupts normal thyroid immune system and reproductive function and causes neurotoxicity. 2-4-D can impede the normal action of estrogen, androgen, and decreases fertility and raises the risk of birth defects. It also passes from mother to child through umbilical cord blood and breast milk. It is not just direct exposure to spray areas that presents a concern, there is some inevitable transfer into the homes or neighboring homes from the use on the lawns. Some pesticides waft in through vents and windows during and after spraying. People and pets also track residues inside. A 2001 study found that a week after lawn treatment, 2-4-D could be detected on all indoor air surfaces. The team estimated that indoor exposure to 2-4-D for young children was about 10 times higher during the week after lawn application than it was the week before the lawn was treated. Many chemicals remain active from a month to over a year. During this time, they can release toxic vapors and cause illnesses from neighboring lawns or while playing on or mowing contaminated grass. 2-4-D is the most commonly found herbicide in streams and shallow groundwater from urban lawns. Of the 50 chemicals on the EPA's list of unregulated drinking water, contaminated several on lawn chemicals, including herbicide, urine, napalene, and various trazines such as actazine. Most widely applied pesticide is glyphosate, commonly known as Roundup. It's also a carcinogen that causes genetic damage to DNA even at very low concentrations. Until now, most health studies have focused on the safety of glyphosate rather than the mixture found in Roundup. But in these new studies, scientists found that Roundup's inert ingredients amplifies the toxic effect on human cells, even at concentrations much more diluted than those used on farms and lawns. One of Roundup's inert ingredients, POEA, can kill human cells particularly embryonic, placenta, and umbilical cord cells. This clearly confirms that inert ingredients in Roundup's formulations are not inert. Moreover, the proprietary mixtures available on the market can cause cell damage and even death at the residual level found on Roundup-treated crops such as soybeans, alfalfa, and corn or lawns and gardens. Researchers suspect that Roundup might cause pregnancy problems by interfering with hormonal production, possibly leading to a normal fetal development, no birth weight, and miscarriages. Pesticides, fungicides, herbicides, and synthetic fertilizers are linked from everything from cancers such as colon, lung, nose, prostate, ovaries, leukemia, non-Hodgkin's, lymphoma, and multiple melanoma, also Parkinson's disease, ADHD, asthma, developmental delays, behavioral disorders, and motor dysfunctions. Researchers are learning a great deal about how vulnerable children's brains are to pesticides during fetal and early childhood development. These delicate processes are easily disrupted by very small doses of toxic chemicals that would be virtually harmless to adults. Prenatal exposure to the herbicide actazine are associated with female birth with fetal growth restriction and small head circumference. Pesticides increase susceptibility to certain cancers by breaking down the immune system's surveillance against cancer cells, infants, children, the elderly, and chronically ill are at the greatest risk. A study published in the Journal of Natu-, of, a study published in the Journal of the National Cancer Institute finds that household and garden pesticides use can increase the risk of childhood leukemia as much as sevenfold. The National Academy of Science reports that children are more susceptible to chemicals than adults and estimates that 50% of lifetime exposure occurs during the first five years of life, even without apparent symptoms. Exposure may still be harmful. Long-term problems include lower male fertility, miscarriages, birth defects, chemical sensitivities. Immune problems include immune suppression, cataracts, liver and kidney dysfunction, and heart disservice, and cancer. So I could skip for just finishing up then. There are alternatives to lawn care chemicals. Natural landscape maintenance programs can achieve a healthy pest-free lawn, using the latest scientific developments in organic agriculture and horticulture. For example, corn gluten is a natural weed killer and fertilizer, all down. Organic herbicide is a mixture of vinegar and citric acid used entrusted by cities and municipalities. And the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. Lawns can also be enriched naturally by the spreading of compost in the spring and fall. Leaving your lawn flippings of your soils too complex, consider aeration once a year. Moat often, but don't go too short. Water deeply, but not too often. And the risks that we are taking with our health, our children's health, and the health of our pets, and the health of the earth seems intolerable when there are so many safe alternatives to keeping our lawns green and healthy. So.
Thank you, and I'm gonna invite you to contact me by email and we can continue this discussion-
Okay.
... offline.
Can I ask you a question?
You may use your-
All right. Um, what are you hoping will happen?
Um, so the reason that this was brought up, you know, my attention this year was, my children and I were, they were playing in a little blow-up pool in their backyard, and there is, one of our neighbors' chemical companies came to spray that night and there's no warning to us. And my children are playing in their pool, and there's this top, you know, obnoxious toxic smell that my windows are open, I could have my clothes on the line, and there's no, there, there's, no one has to give me a warning.
Okay, so-
And I think there should be, I don't know, maybe a city ordinance that states that you have to give a neighbor, you know, 24 hours warning before so I could get my windows closed because like I said, you know, it's not just, just because I don't spray my lawn doesn't mean these chemicals don't waft in through other, I mean, obviously if you're smelling it, it's getting into, you know, your house. When I was over at my father-in-law's, um, he had his neighbor spraying and instantly my sister-in-law had, you know, migraine headache. My husband wasn't feeling well from the, you know, from the smells, and so we're trying to shut the windows as quick as we can, but, you know, you're already exposed to it and our children, my children are, you know, my son is three and my daughter's, um, 18 months. And I'm obviously expecting, and so this is something that I'm passionate about because, you know, you're exposing them to these things that we don't-
Are there other areas in the country that ban these things?
Oh, um, well, there's certain, um, you know, states that have more restricted bans and there's certain, um, communities, but then it's tougher in states that they don't allow you even to, you know, be allowed to ban them because it's, you know, public or private property and-
I suppose farming states would not particularly care about that sort of thing-
Yep, yep, exactly.
Such as Minnesota.
Yep, exactly. I'm aware of where I'm at.
So we're surrounded.
Surrounded.
Kenyon could ban those, but-
Yeah, yeah, but then we're surrounded, and I guess that's 100% true when I realize where I'm at and what the days are where I live by. But I think in our town-
You could move to the Himalayas.
Yeah, but, well, I like, I like being in Kenyon. I love, I love this town. I love being here with my children. It's a nice, you know, quiet community for us. It's real safe here, it feels good here, and I like raising my children here, and so it's, you know, it's just something that we could, I don't know, the city can work on.
Well, it's good to be aware of what people are spreading on their lawn, including yourself.
Right, exactly.
People apply these things are licensed. Now, I've never really checked what requirements are. There may already be regulations that they, or to notify neighbors.
Yeah, check into that.
Right.
But thanks for bringing it to our attention, and as I said, please contact me to keep me thinking about it so I don't walk out of here tonight and forget about it.
And-
Okay.
Not a su-, not a situation that's going to be magically taken care of tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, I'm aware of that.
You can, you can work to work.
How, how, um, good are the alternatives?
We're nearly 15 minutes into the meeting, so really we should move on with the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Well, throughout, I know throughout Kenyon that it's been banned, a lot of the products that we use in a lot of places in Europe, I skipped a paragraph, I was wanting to true green and how a lot of their products that they use, um, you know, 41% of them are banned throughout Europe because they're just-
How about the vinegar and so on that you were talking about?
So a lot of the-
Have they worked fairly decent or?
I mean, they seem like they, from what I've read on them, I mean, I don't use anything in our lawn, I don't, you know, so I just kinda let it be, but from what I've read, you know, different municipalities, different cities use those things, and I, I don't see Kenyans spraying big, you know, it's not like we go to the park and they're fogging a sandwich, then I would probably bury a sandwich.
Those things are, but they're very time-critical and weather-critical.
Yeah, okay.
They've got to be just the right conditions, they work great.
Right, and there's a lot, you know, an organic lawn company that's in Rochester now, there's, you know, a research for-
I bet it's products that are a lot more forgiving, that way you won't spray them any old time, that's gonna clear it.
Yeah.
But seriously, folks, we need to move on with our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You've seen that's in the meeting already, thank you. Now, move on to adopting the agenda. Any further additions to items?
One item would be to add under New Business, um, uh, let's see, New Business C would be, um, adding a 3% fee for credit card processing, fund side credit card processing, not so much online. You know, talk about-
And would Dan apply it in Liquor Store?
No, like, well, no, no, I would not recommend applying it to the meeting, absolutely not. This is for people when they come in and pay thousands of dollars for permits and higher things, um, we're getting, we're getting smoked because, like with the building permits, if they pay with a credit card, 80% of it goes to the county, and so the fee that comes out of, say a $2,000, well, that, there's a 2%, 2.5% fee, let's just say, that comes out of our 500, it doesn't come out of the whole 2,000. So we've gotta do something about that. So I wouldn't do it with retail POS sales at all, I don't think that would be a good idea, 'cause you can deal with that other ways than we probably have, but that's what I'm talking about. It doesn't happen that often, but, so anyway. And the other item would be, um, Joe's just gonna touch base about the Centennial Dry Paving or update. That would be under Engineering C. Okay, that's it? Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, Consent Agenda. Is there anything that should be removed from Consent Agenda, or do we have a motion to accept that as printed?
Right, the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Presentations, public hearings, et cetera. We would now have to open the public hearing.
That's correct.
Centur request to vacate utility easements between lots three and four and lots five and six. Countryside Meadow Edition.
Karen Sherman from Centur here to address the request.
So, thank you for having me back tonight. At the June meeting, we had requested that the approval to allow twin homes to be built on some of the lots that are, have two vacant lots that are adjacent to one another, to allow twin homes to be built on two single-family homes, so thereby allowing zero lot lines and amending the community. So, at that meeting, it was decided that we needed to have a public hearing to finally vacate easements on at least two of those lots, and we're requesting four. So I believe it's two and three and four and five. So, um, that we're requesting that the five easements be vacated. And in your packet was a map that illustrated where those easements were.
And I'll jump into adding in addition to the vacation, also dealing with the planned unit development PUD that existed originally when this was adopted, and we're really doing a clarification of that, and you have later on the agenda, you have two resolutions, one for the vacation, one for the PUD. It's not really an amendment, we're just clarifying to make sure everybody understands what was intended with the twin homes allowed on this development. And with the vacations, then the twin homes can occur on most parts of what we're talking about. So it's really, that's straightforward. Enter the public hearing, if there's any public comment, that's all you need to take, and as soon as you have that, you can move on.
And if there's any questions, we-
Actually, we spoke of this quite a bit in our last meetings, I think we all understand.
Right.
And I only see one citizen here. If she has any comment on this, we can close this hearing and move on. Okay, well, then we close the public hearing and move on to Engineering. Item A, smoke testing, and two remain.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is a memo, one of the maps that we prepared, and I passed out a larger-sized map before the start of the meeting. It's the same as the one in your packet, just easier to read. We've been discussing some issues with the sanitary sewer collection system recently, and one of those items is infoln infiltration, which is referred to as INI. That's surface water getting into your sanitary sewer system, winding up going through your treatment plant, and costing the city money for treating clear water that's, that's just surface runoff and not actual sewer flow. And so there's, the city would like to start to take steps towards identifying where INI is occurring, and then take steps to reduce that as much as possible. Uh, we had put together a kind of a summary or a letter outlining strategies, initial strategies you can take to start identifying the hotspots for INI. And the three main activities were smoke testing, televising, and flow monitoring. And the flow monitoring and the televising have a little more cost associated with them, and so the, the discussion was that they would be targeted for a budget maybe in 2019 through the budgeting process, but the smoke testing is relatively low cost, and at the council meeting where, at the council work session, excuse me, back in June, we had discussed this item. Council was willing to consider proposal to do the smoke testing this year if the funds were available. And so we put together a memo of that effect with the map, and, I mean, the smoke testing, it's a, it's introducing of a, it's a, it's a, it's just a, it's not smoke, it's just a, like a vapor material. You blow into the sewer, and it goes through the pipes, and if it starts to come out of the ground, you know, you've got a broken leaking pipe, or if it comes out of a storm sewer manhole, then we know there's a cross connection between the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer. So it's those types of things, it's you, you're blowing the vapor into the one end of the pipe, and then you're watching for where it might come out, and then you just move around from spot to spot and do this, and note where you see the, the smoke coming out.
And is the smoke colored?
Uh, no, well, smoke, it's smoke colored.
Okay, so it's gray.
Yeah, essentially gray, yeah, yeah.
Do we pick colors? Have nice blues coming up and purple over here, or red or, and so on. Okay, well.
But there, there is typically, um, the, the process is, we, we have the equipment, Bolden and Cass equipment to do this, uh, to, to do this activity, and it usually takes a couple of people to, to set up and run the equipment, but then the key is to have enough people to watch at locations so that you can do this work efficiently. And so what we've proposed in, in our approach here is that we could provide the equipment at, at no cost to the city, and we could provide a draft mailing that the city could put on City Leatherhead and mail out to the area where we're gonna do the smoke testing ahead of time. And then we would provide two staff to set up the equipment and to, to perform the smoke testing. And then we would document and, and record all the findings of the testing. What we would ask for the city to do as part of this would be to provide two or three staff members to help with the observation and spotting where the smoke is, is coming out, where spotting where the leaks are. And then to provide just a few traffic cones so that as we're setting up with a manhole to blow the smoke, that we've got proper protection for the, the staff that's doing that. And then obviously to, you know, to provide a notice to the people in advance so that they're aware that the smoke testing is gonna be occurring. And you can see, we, we provided an example of one of the notices in one of the other cities that, where we've done smoke testing this year. And it basically says that, um, you know, smoke from the test could enter homes if there's a floor drain, or, or a sink or a toilet that's been used a while, and a trap is dried out and the smoke can, can make it through, but the smoke is not toxic, it, it won't stain any fabrics or any curtains in the homes, it's just simply, it, it's an indicator, is all it is.
How, how often have you run into problems with people being allergic or actually coming up through your floor drains?
If it comes up through the floor drains, they're gonna have sewer holes, so it's already a problem.
Right.
They've already got a vague problem to turn up to-
To identify, yeah.
Identify.
Yeah, I've not, I've not heard of any complaints from people that are allergic and reactive to this.
Assuming that they don't have an issue in their plumbing, they should only see the smoke come up of them.
Yep, yep. So it's, it's fairly straightforward, and then we would have contact information in case they do see it and they're, they're concerned or they don't know what's wrong.
And you have to wait about two days to do this.
Yep, yep, and in the map, we've identified three priority areas we would target in, in order of priority, and we would anticipate two days of staff time to come out and do this and then document the findings. The highest priority area is in the downtown area, which we've talked about before, basically Second Street from Langford over to, to Spring Street, and then one block or at least the alleys on either side of, of Second Street. And then also the, the trailer court down by the Folcraft property, the old, the former trailer, trailer court. The Public Works Director suspects that he's still got some connections in there that are not supposed to be active but are taking on, that are leaking. So that's one area that he would like to get identified and sealed up properly. So those would be the, the first priority area. Second priority area would be Forest Street and some of the branches off of Forest Street. And then the third priority, if there's, if there's time available, we would do the areas highlighted in yellow. You might know, Red Wing Avenue is in the third area, and we're looking at doing that street potential and actual reconstruction, so you might wonder why that's not in one of the higher priority areas, that, because we're gonna be doing other investigations there such as televising and that of that sanitary sewer. And if we wind up replacing most of the storm sewer on that street and replacing a good amount of the sanitary sewer, we're gonna be effectively taking care of INI in those mains already. So that's why it's low priority for this testing, because it's gonna be targeted through that project.
Correct.
The, one other one that would be probably the last thing we do if we still had time and budget, would be that area that comes from Highway 60 down through the woods, kinda follows a creek down there. Public Works Director has a real difficulty with that, with that sewer line, and frankly, some of the manholes in there are not, not been located. They've been not misplaced over the years but lost track of.
It's a real shallow lane and goes, I think something's even exposed in the creek here.
Yeah, difficult to, to access. So that was a thought that if we could get smoke into that line and start to see where the smoke's coming out, we could hopefully trace down where it might be exposed or where the manholes are, yeah.
Might be some real surprises in that area, yeah.
Yep, and that could be an area where there really is some INI occurring if it's, if it's close to the creek and that creek is getting into the, into the pipes.
A lot of water flows down through there and that-
And we, we think for the budget-
Moves around with the years.
Oh, yeah. We think for the budget, we could definitely get through Priority Areas 1 and 2, and it's, it really depends on how many staff the city can provide and how, how quickly we can identify the areas and document those findings, and also how many we find. That's, you know, that, that will affect how long Areas 1 and 2 take, but we're co-, we're confident we can get through Areas 1 and 2 for the $3,000 budget, and hopefully we can get a good chunk of Priority Area 3 as well.
I really think that one area we just talked about there, right to the south of the sewer plant where she follows the creek, I think there'd be some major problems here because it is so shallow and it doesn't follow the creek, that we could be eating some creek water, not only-
Sure.
Exactly.
So I, I really think that's kind of a-
Maybe move that up in priority?
Yeah, up on the priority.
That was, what I was kinda getting at, I think that could be a, may be a trouble spot that should probably look into.
Could be relatively quick to go through also.
It's been kinda neglected over the years.
There's not a service connections back to the, the, the most time consuming parts probably just to be walking back there to try and get on access, so, okay.
Bring, bring it out to B.
Yeah.
When are you planning to do this and how much time are you anticipating? Give us kind of a scheduling.
Yep, well, rough, in rough terms, we, we would work with city staff to see when it fits their schedule, because if they're gonna provide, you know, say, three staff members, we don't wanna do it when they're in one of their busy times of year. So we're anticipating it would be later in the summer or early in the fall. But we get, we get that window identified, and then we have the notice prepared that the, the city hall here could put on City Leatherhead, mail out to the areas where we're gonna do it, and the work itself should take two working days.
I'm all good.
So, so what we're, what we're seeking tonight from Council would be-
I'd like to know about it.
If, if the Council is, is accepting of this proposal, then the action would be to authorize Bolden and Cass and the city staff to proceed with the smoke testing as outlined here, you know, at a budget and shared cost of, of $3,000 to be completed at, at the appropriate time later this, later this year.
We've talked about this for how many years?
Yeah.
This is a good start.
Yeah.
With that, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'm second to that one there. All in favor?
Aye.
Proceed.
If you can, Council, then we will move that line by decree up in priority.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's highly likely to have some serious problems.
Yeah, we've talked about it with Public Works Director more than a few times.
Item B, you're relying on Second Street.
Okay, this is one of the other things we talked about with Council recently and at the work session concerning the sanitary sewer system, is the, in addition to INI, there's also the, the issue of mercury in the wastewater stream. And as we've discussed before, the city operates its, its collection system and its treatment plant on a five-year revolving permit from the Minnesota Fish and Control Agency. And your next permit cycle is up for renewal in February of 2020, and with that- And with that new 2020 permit, you will have a hard limit for mercury in the, mercury in the flow that exits your plant, which is called the effluent. Influent comes into the plant, effluent goes out of the plant. So you have a hard limit that's going to be taking effect in February of 2020 on the effluent from your plant. And we're trying to make sure that we can predictably and consistently meet that effluent by the date. And we've talked about this before, that we've been doing mercury testing around the city, city staff has, and we've been working with them on that for the past couple of years. And we identified a real hotspot right out here on Second Street between Forest and Red Wing. And looking through the business records, there were two dentist offices that were located there. One's still active and one is no longer active. But the dental practice with the old mercury fillings was a high producer of mercury. And before the process of trapping that mercury at the source, it would wind up in the wastewater stream and wind up in your, in your, your effluent that comes out of the plant. So the readings showed very high concentrations there. We did initial activity to try and flush and clean those lines, jet them clean to try and hopefully break loose any historic mercury deposits that had built up over the years and get them to flush out of the system. And we did see high spikes in mercury initially after that flushing and it came back down like we had hoped it would. And the readings have come down, but we still can't predictably and consistently meet that limit. So what we'd like to do as a next step, and we've discussed this with council before, would be to actually put a new liner in the sewer main for those couple of blocks of Second Street. That would essentially trap any historic mercury deposits that's in that pipe because the new liner would act as a, as the new pipe. And the wastewater would flow within the liner and would not be able to pick up any, any mercury from any existing concentrations that are attached to the existing pipe. So we put together an outline of the approach for doing that. And one of the complications is the line coming up from the, from the intersection of Forest, there are no manholes upstream of that line. And it's about 500 to 550 feet long. We don't exactly know it for sure because when they were jetting the line, they couldn't get all the way to the end and they didn't have a televising camera with, so they just went as far as they could. So the first step would be to get that line televised so we know exactly what we're dealing with and also know exactly how many services are coming into that line and where they're located. Once that's known, then they can design the liner to fit the pipe so they know they have the right amount of liner prepared for this application. Then we'd have to come in and install two new manholes, which would involve digging up the street so that we could access. And once those new manholes are in place, then they could install the sewer liner within the main. The sewer liner would go in and they would reestablish by cutting out openings in the liner where each one of the services connect, which is partly the reason we need to televise ahead of time. And then as part of that process too, they would then chemically seal throughout the connections of those service lines to the manhole to make sure we've got a good watertight connection at each one of those services. So the benefits of that basic project, that base project to do the liner would be to eliminate the INI in that pipe, eliminate the INI at those service connections, and also to isolate any mercury that's in that mainline pipe and effectively take it out of the wastewater stream. And that baseline project, you can see on page three of our memo, kind of the approach to it, we've broken it down into three steps. The first step would be the preliminary investigation, which would be to get the televising done so that we can identify the exact length of the pipe, the number and location of the services, and then do a preliminary design based on that and an updated cost estimate. That would be the first phase that we'd be looking for the council to initiate the project with. Once that's done, we could come back, tell you what we found, to tell you, give you an updated scope on the work and updated price, and then we could add, request authorization for the final design of the project. And then that would also involve then getting the permit from MINDOT that we need to do to do the work out on Second Streets and so there's a trunk highway. And then once we do that, then we'd come back with plans to you and get authorization from you to put it out for bids and have the construction done. The other thing we talked about along this line is that, you know, there may be mercury in the sewer main itself, but there could also be mercury coming in from the service lines, especially from those two service lines that serve the dental offices. So the council had talked about the possibility of maybe looking at either lining or replacing some of the key services in that two-block stretch of Second Street as part of this project. And so we've, we've set it up as kind of an alternate add-on to the base project. It really, whether or not a sewer, sewer services can be lined in general, but there's some complications doing it. If you've got too many bends and twists and turns, that prohibits the liner because they can't get the liner to pull through and, and be placed properly. Also, if it's made of the wrong material and the liner won't adhere to it, that also would preclude the lining. So we'd need to do some investigation to see if the property owners were cooperative and if we could get in and televise the sewer line. And then we could determine whether or not it's an appropriate candidate for lining.
There was two surface lines. Those are pretty necessary to be assured that we have these problems solved. The rest of the services, unless the smoke testing shows real problems, they probably wouldn't need to.
The two key services for mercury would be the ones that, that serve the historic dentist office.
Is it possible to put the manholes where those two lines come in?
Possible.
No, the one.
But typically, we wouldn't design a manhole, a sewer system with service connections directly into the manhole.
I agree with Mike that. This has got to be a complete package and I don't, I think without addressing those private lines, I think.
One of those belongs to us.
Well, without addressing those private lines, we could be not solving the problem.
Well, and, and a part of it is too, is that the city can only do what's in the public right-of-way. So we can line or replace those services up to the right-of-way limit, which is essentially up to the front of the building there in the sidewalk. But then the plum, the private plumbing inside the building is really out of the city jurisdiction and we have to get cooperation from the.
Actually, it would be the one of those, of those two that we're talking about. Only one of them would be in that situation because the other one is city property.
Okay. And even if, if it can't be lined, we could at least replace the part of the service within the public right-of-way, where that would involve some open trench excavation.
Be avoided if possible.
Yep. Or a middle ground might be that if we know the service is straight, at least up to the building, and then it might take some twists and turns, we may be able to install a new cleanout just outside the building and access the line there and at least get the straight portion of that surface line, have a liner installed. So a few different options, but the key is going to be doing that preliminary investigation so we can figure out exactly what the circumstances are and what the feasible options are to address it. So the investigation, we estimate, is going to be for each one of the individual services would be on the order of $500 to $750. So if you wanted to just target these two specific services.
I think they could be included right from the beginning.
As part of this investigation, we've shown the preliminary investigation at a total cost of, the total estimate of $10,000. So to add on investigating those two services would add about another $1,000 to $1,500. So you'd be in the range of $11,000 to $11,500 to do the investigation on the mainline plus those two key services. And then from that, we could come back then with an update on what we found, what the more defined scope of the work would be for the project, an updated cost estimate, and then we could take the next step from there. So you can see from the men, from the memo, we're looking at roughly a total base project cost of about $200,000, $195,000 to be exact. But that would just be the mainline, not including services. Adding on the services, if they, if they're able to be lined, it's probably about $10,000 for each one. If they have to be replaced, you're more in the range of $17,000 to $20,000. If they need a cleanout, the cleanouts would be about $4,000 apiece. So there's adding on those two services to the base project could add anywhere from about $20,000 to $45,000 to the project.
And it'd be the whole key to this project being successful.
It could improve the results you get.
So has this line ever been televised?
Not to my knowledge and not to the Public Works Director's knowledge.
You know, it could be such a thing as that over the years, that street has been redone and redone, there could be some manholes that are covered now.
It could be. And the televising would show that. I mean, the camera, if it pops out in the manhole, you know, then we could locate where that is and, and, yeah.
The city forefathers would, that's a long stretch if they want to add some manholes put in there.
Yep. We'd probably some other unusual things on one, some other, right.
Why the heck did they do that?
Yep. But that, and that's why, that's why we, we're not asking to authorize the entire project right now because we just don't have the confidence level to be able to tell you exactly what it is. That's why we're just, we've shown you what we think the whole project would cost, but what we're asking tonight, if you're, if you're willing and interested in moving forward, would be to authorize that preliminary investigation phase for $10,000 for the base project. And if you want to add those two services in, then you'd be at about $11,500 to do the investigation with those two services.
We're going to do it, we're going to do it, right?
Yep. You got at least, yeah. Then, then at least you could say to the MPC, we've done everything we as the city are able to do within our public right-of-way to manage our system.
But in the end, what we want is to solve the problem, not apply plausible deniability.
No, we want, we want, we want positive results.
Yeah. So do we need a motion?
Would be the.
Just an okay to.
Would be the cleanest, I guess.
I think it'd be a motion.
Motion to clear out the preliminary investigation, including the two.
Two key services, yes. Which case I'll make that motion, what you said.
I'll second that one. On the favor? Aye. Motion passes. We'll have to stop some more to work.
Thank you, council.
Now we move on to item C, Centennial Drive paving.
Yeah, and this is just an update. If you'll call, we've been looking at paving Centennial Drive from, from trunk highway in, on the match where the existing pavement ends down by the curb and by the bend in the road. And we looked at that earlier this spring with the Public Works Director and we went through and put some thought to it, put together a, a plan and a small specification that we could use for going on getting quotes. And then when we put together an estimate of what we thought that was going to cost, we came out probably between $100 and $105,000. Unfortunately, we, unfortunately, the municipal contracting law requires that anything over $100,000 has to go out for competitive bidding, not quotes. However, the legislature this year passed the new law to increase that threshold from $100,000 to $150,000, and that takes effect on August 1st. So we convene the next regular council meeting, which will be in August, I think it's the 13th of August. That new law will be in effect and we'll be able to quote a project under $150,000.
Okay.
So essentially what we're, we just kind of wanted to remind everybody, the discussion we had at the last time we talked about this back in May was that everyone was good with the scope of work and the documents that we put together, but we had to wait for the right timing because we didn't want to go through the public bidding process, we wanted to wait for the, the new law to take effect. So now that we're at the July meeting, we're thinking the appropriate action would be for the council to authorize the staff to get the quotes after August 1st when the new laws are in effect so that they can be brought back to the city council at the meeting on August 14th for consideration. And that way we won't lose, if we wait until next month to authorize the staff, we'll lose a month in getting the quotes and getting.
And we're into the time of year when it might be harder to get it done.
So that's why if we get the authorization now on July 10th, we know that once we get to the end of July, we can contact the contractors, get their quotes, get them back in time for your, your August meeting and bring it to you for consideration.
You good with that?
You got money budgeted for that?
Um, no, we don't have money specifically. We did not budget anything toward that. The actual lining probably would have to come out of, you know, reserve by capital. But the $10,000 part of it, you know, I guess we could figure out somewhere in the budget, whether it's general engineering or someplace, but we, no, we have not put anything in the budget for that.
Like, that, she said, for Centennial Drive?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was talking about.
You were still back in the last.
I was. I was still like, trying to dig into this when I'm reading this. Okay, here at Centennial Drive, what we have is $40,000 in the budget for paving and then probably about $25,000 for sewer or underground or whatever. So we probably have about $65,000. And then I think we also have put in some money for replacing manhole or culvert repair. So we figured the rest of that would come out of capital. So there's probably about $68,000, I think, that's in the budget for that.
Have we talked to Ford Craft to see you up there?
We tried, but I, I've gotten no response. I got the, the maintenance property grounds manager, but then I went up to the, what would be the equivalent of the plant manager and the CEO and I never got a call back from them. And I called the plant manager twice. So I don't have emails for them that way and I don't know if that makes a difference. So anyway, I have not heard, gotten anything from them.
But we.
In essence, it's about 60 to 70 percent.
Yeah. So our estimate I'm looking at here as of May was $102,300 for construction.
Last year, we figured in the budget probably push them up $85,000. So obviously it's just coming up, maybe not, but we figured the remainder, you know, could come out of capital. This is a capitalized project because it's a street, so I don't, that's not going to be a financial issue.
Well, we talked a long time about narrowing it down on the west end of it, already crest down. Was that put into this budget or?
Um, Joe, did you, when you guys looked at this, remember, you know, when we talked about narrowing it down, did you, I have to refer that to Joe, as far as what he based the estimate on. The original estimate was just an aggregate figure. I mean, we didn't base it on a 28-foot or 24-foot or.
The only problem I could see there is with the cement coming and all the Ford Craft on that back rock making that.
Yeah.
They.
They crumbling heads.
Yeah, that's the only going back I could see with, with narrowing it right there.
And would it save enough pot going into work?
It's just not going to save much. I mean, the, we've got it laid out right now in the plan. I did bring a copy, one copy with me that I can certainly cast around if you'd like. But we had it laid out as a 28-foot wide pavement with no curb and gutter, which is essentially the standard width. A standard lane is 12 feet if you've got a curb there. If you're, if you're on a rural road, usually you have 14 feet, so you have a couple of, a couple of feet there in case you drift over the line so you don't go off the edge. So 28 feet would be the minimum standard we typically would use for a rural roadway. And I could tell you, the pavement cost itself in the, in the estimate we did, the total of the paving was about, about $70,000. So if you reduced, you know, that width from 28 feet to 26 feet on half of the road, you might save maybe what, $3,000 to $4,000. Could you save about 10% if you, if you did it on the whole length, but if you only did it on the half the length, you know, with the crest of the hill, you're saving about 5% out of that $70,000, which is about $3,500. My recommendation would, would be to maintain that standard 28-foot width if you're going to do the project.
I'm not opposed to it, I just was running a difference, you know, how it would factor into your.
Yep. Yeah, so, yeah, we laid it out at a consistent 28-foot width from the connection all the way up from end to end.
At this point, we'd be just operating with your quotes, right?
Yep. Yeah, the quotes would come back to you then for review. And of course, prices and the quotes would be, you know, whatever the, whatever the market is, provides us.
So the attorney, you're a rip that timing with?
Yeah, no, I think that works. That's what we talked about before. As long as there's authorization and not doing the work and seeking these out before the laws affect, that should be fine.
And I recall too, as long as the, you know, the quotes were dated.
Authorization is specifically to not do until, uh, date.
Yep.
And. And with that said, I'll make the motion to authorize preparation of documents so that we can, as soon as legally possible, go out for it.
Well, the documents are prepared, it's just really authorizing the solicitation of the quotes at, at the, at the correct time.
I wasn't sure you had everything done.
No, we're ready, or it's just, it's just sitting on the shelf ready to hold.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Those. Another, you've got some more work.
So we will have those quotes then ready for you at your August 14th meeting.
So we move on to legal then. Item A, update on accessory structure located behind post office building 529.
So you have a copy of, at the last council meeting, you had authorized or directed us to get a report on the property from the building official, from the county building official, Doug Moreham. And so that was done in June, June 14th. Doug visited that site, he was not able to get into it. I contacted the owners, but I, I didn't specifically say, I, you know, what was the deal. I wanted him to try to call me back so I could talk to him, I never got a call back. So anyway, they did not, were not able to get in there. So basically, if you read this, and I won't go through the whole thing, but they cite, you know, the state building code, which is the same thing, it's used for these inspections with residential properties, commercial properties that we use for. The building next to Schweick's, it was used, you know, for residential structures like Corleone Palace. And the building official did not find that that building, or did find, I guess, we can flip that, that it was structurally viable. He did not find that it was not structurally viable. He said that this building shows its signs of age and need for maintenance work, but he feels it's structurally sound. So that angle is complete, I don't know how else to put that, but we can't show that it's structurally viable or not structurally viable. And so with that, Scott, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously the preliminary thing we need before we do any action like that. Stepping back from that, we've done other actions where it's a nuisance for something on those lines, certainly looks that are, are maintenance code issues that are maintenance items that we can look at to the code to.
And not, not having been able to get inside the building, states that the roofing material is wearing but without visible signs of leakage from the outside. And the edges of the roof in several places are starting to crumble. The main deck may be sound, but the edges are not, and that's only going to spread and get worse with time. So it may not be.
May not appear to be.
Maybe it may not be unsafe at this point, but it will inevitably become that way if maintenance is not done.
Right. And, and we certainly have the ability to do that on the code and say, you need to, you know, fix windows, fix this, fix that, as a nuisance type, I may junk or anything else sits around, peeling paint, things like that, we can usually go and, and deal with, but without getting into the structure, not only can we do that as alleged there's something else going on, get an administrative search warrant, which we've done before, and actually then have Doug go in and do that. Based on the exterior, what he's saying is that's not going to show us hazardous anyways. So.
Maybe a waste of money.
Yeah. And that's my concern, is if we're really talking about that, it's if there's, there's exterior issues we can do, and that's a simple nuisance citation. And that's probably what we should be doing right now, is what the best we can do, it's certain by part of the most costly factor.
How enforceable is that? You watch the chairman fixing the windows. I mean, you know, one person's idea fixed up and another person's idea is different. Where, where do we sit with this?
There's subjectivity, there's no question, but, I mean, if there's something that's actually a hazard of some sort or a nuisance of some sort where, you know, holes in the wall, holes in the, the windows, broken windows, kids climbing in, vermin climbing in, rodents, whatever it may be, that certainly is both a danger. That's what I'm hoping to do.
And yes, with what, they obstructed the windows, they did not fix the windows.
And it's open to the elements, a hard act. They said they were going to seal those windows up and cover them up, that doesn't mean we could have this.
They covered most of them, so you couldn't see how bad it was, but I can guarantee there are still creatures getting into that building. Well, I'd say we go that route then.
And maybe do we have David Jacobson do something relative to that, we can decide, probably in terms of what may be beyond our nuisance code as well that did go out. There are no perfect remedies here. We've got both criminal side and civil side. Civil side's always more expensive, that's what a hazardous building would be, that's what a nuisance code enforcement would be. I would suggest we probably start with some type of citation of what's through David's office and we can talk about that. That's the most costly type of way to approach this.
You pushing it out?
Can see if we can do something. We've done that on other properties, we, you know, I don't want to bring up all the streets, but that's where it started, it was cleaned up at one time, and then it went way backwards after the next few years. But initially it was cited, and we civilly cited it, we discussed how to cross back the property, and then it went really south and no one came to do it, and that's what we got in the hazardous building. And honestly, it comes back to the city all the time, experts and.
This is going to be a somewhat different situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, and I'm not trying to say that it's going to end up there, but.
Since, since the federal government through the post office is a renter in that main building there.
Yeah. No, we certainly can do that, we can talk to Lee and David and see what we can come up with, but I, I think going that route to the prosecutor's office is much more costly.
I know the old saying, crawling through the cracks seems to.
It was just amazing, he spent so much money on the building for proper.
I know.
New windows, new tuck points, replaced everything upstairs in all the apartments, and then left that garage or something. Or they had new concrete, you know, concrete on, putting new concrete.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
I don't think we need anything else.
I actually don't need.
Other than a direction to proceed as possible. So we have a B here, resolution 2018-10, request to vacate utility easements. And we have the numbers wrong there, that was two and three and four, I mean, two and three and four and five.
Two, three, four and five, we're at seven eight, that's right.
It's right in the map.
Whatever, we have a margin of error.
So. So. Stand your, your second and credit. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Resolution 2018-08 regarding zero watt ion homes within the countryside metal plant unit belt. And we discuss this, consider it, so.
I'll make that motion. Going with resolution 2018-09.